We have a public hearing on the Neighborhood Assistance Act to start off our meeting this evening. And Derek, do you have a quick presentation on the Neighborhood Assistance Act?
I can give a very quick one. The Neighborhood Assistance Act is a tax credit program designed to provide funding for municipal and tax exempt organizations by providing a corporation business tax credit for businesses who make cash contributions to these entities. This year, we did not receive any applications.
Okay. So we do have to go through the public hearing process, so I'm gonna quickly read the announcement that's required. But we just wanted to let people know what the public hearing is about. You're still free to come up and talk about this public hearing before we move to our regular council meeting. Public hearing ground rules. A public hearing has been scheduled to allow interested citizens an opportunity to express their opinions regarding the 2014 Neighborhood Assistance Act proposals. And may we have roll call, please?
Councilman Arnoni.
Here.
Councilman Bosco.
Here.
Councilman Sikala.
Here.
Councilman Denny.
Here.
Councilman Edgar. Councilman Hall.
Here.
Mayor Copan.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Lee.
Here.
Councilman Mangini.
Here.
Councilman Stokes.
Here.
Councilman Suzak.
Here.
We have ten members present, one is absent.
The following notice of public hearing was published in the Hartford Current Friday, May 9th, 2014. Town of Enfield Legal Notice Public Hearing. The Enfield Town Council will hold a public hearing in the Enfield Town Hall Council Chamber, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, on Monday, May 19th, 2014, at 6:45 PM to allow interested citizens an opportunity to express their opinions regarding the 2014 Neighborhood Assistance Act proposals. Ground rules for the public hearing are: One, there is no time limit, but I ask that each person not take up too much time so that everyone will have an opportunity to speak. Two, after each person who desires to have had one chance to speak, I shall permit those individuals who desire a second chance. Three, after those individuals who desire to speak a second time, I shall permit those individuals who desire a third, fourth, et cetera, time. And four, we ask that you please refrain from the use of personalities. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council this evening on the Neighborhood Assistance Act proposals?
Oh, no, no.
Anyone for the second time. And for the third time, sensing there is no public input, I will close the public hearing. All right. We have to wait four minutes until seven to be able to officially start the council meeting at 7 o'clock.
Four minutes, that's...
So if anyone has a joke, Mr. Tuttle, you want to come forward? Come on, Dave. We'll recess until 7 PM. I know, oh, I know. Yep. And we can call the regular meeting back to order, and we would ask everyone in the audience to please stand for a prayer led by Councilman Greg Stokes and the pledge of allegiance led by...
It's Aaron.
Aaron Longo, where's Aaron? Come on up, Aaron. Aaron is with troop number...
108.
108. Okay, so Councilman Stokes is gonna do the prayer first, and then you'll lead us in the prayer, I mean, in the pledge.
Okay. All right. Let's pray. Dear Lord, as we continue our work on behalf of the people of Enfield, we pray for understanding the issues and wisdom to make the right decisions. We also acknowledge our men and women who serve in the military. As last Saturday was Armed Forces Day and next Monday is Memorial Day, we take a moment to consider their service and sacrifice. Armed Forces Day is a day to honor those who wear the uniform today and stand watch over our nation. Memorial Day is a day to honor and remember those who stood the watch, fought the fights, and gave their lives to protect and provide our continued freedoms. Place your hands of protection on those in harm's way, and may they return home to a thankful nation. And place your arms around those who have fallen and let them know they have never been forgotten and never will be forgotten for their sacrifice to America, which is one nation under God. Amen.
Amen. There you go, Aaron. I had that, so the flag's right over here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Aaron, you want to say anything about you and your troop?
I am here today to... I'm here for, to take a report on, for my communications merit badge, and to know what you guys talk about, and to discuss a debate, and for what we're doing in troop 108.
Good. All right. Aaron, thanks a lot for being here. Much appreciated. And thanks for coming out to the council meeting, and good luck with your scouting career. All right. Okay, and may we have roll call, please?
Councilman Stokes.
Here.
Councilman Suzak.
Here.
Councilman Arnoni.
Here.
Councilman Bosco.
Here.
Councilman Sikala.
Here.
Councilman Denny.
Here.
Councilman Edgar.
Councilman Hall. Here.
Mayor Copan.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Lee.
Here.
Councilman Mangini.
Here.
There's ten members present, and one is absent.
Next item on the agenda is our fire evacuation announcement. I remind everyone in the audience, in the event that the fire alarm sounds here at Town Hall, we have to evacuate the building. Closest exit would be to the rear of council chambers and out to the front of Town Hall. But if you choose to take the side door, to your right, our left, we ask you to then take the back set of stairs to the back parking lot of Town Hall. Minutes of the preceding meetings, we have six to approve. First is the special meeting of May 1st, 2014.
So moved.
By Councilman Mangini, seconded by Councilman Denny. Any discussion, special meeting, May 1st. Sensing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed, any abstentions? One abstention, Councilman Sikala. Regular meeting, May 5th, 2014. I'm sorry, special meeting, May 5th, 2014.
So moved.
By Councilman Mangini, seconded by Councilman Hall. Discussion, sensing none, show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed, any abstentions, unanimous? Regular meeting, May 5th, 2014.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Councilman Mangini, seconded by Councilman Arnoni. Discussion, sensing none, show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed, any abstentions, unanimous? Special meeting, May 7th, 2014.
So moved.
By Councilman Denny, seconded by Councilman Stokes. Discussion, sensing none, by show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed, any abstentions, unanimous? Special meeting, May 12th, 2014.
So moved.
By Councilman Mangini, seconded by Councilman Stokes. Any discussion? Sensing none, show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed, any abstentions, unanimous? And finally, special meeting of May 14th, 2014.
So moved.
By Councilman Mangini, seconded by Councilman Hall. Any discussion? Sensing none, by show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed, any abstentions, unanimous as well. Six meetings in 14 days. All right, next is our special guest section, and I'm gonna ask the council to come out front and ask representatives, we're gonna take Emergency Medical Services Week first, and then we're gonna turn the floor over to our guests from Buzz Robotics. So council can come out front. All right, welcome. Welcome. Okay, so we have a proclamation declaring May 18th through the 24th as Emergency Medical Services Week. I'm gonna read the proclamation, and then I'm gonna turn over, Aaron, who gets to speak? Your choice.
Aaron does.
Oh, it's gonna be you, chief. And then we'll let you tell us about EMS Week and anything else that you want to talk to us about here at the meeting. So we have the proclamation. Proclamation declaring May 18th through the 24th as Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas the residents of Enfield rely on emergency medical service systems to help them in their hour of greatest need, and whereas EMS workers provide crucial pre-hospital medical care to fellow citizens at the most imperative times, and whereas we take comfort in knowing that well-trained, caring men and women are only a phone call away from treating injuries sustained in a car crash, responding to a cardiac emergency, or helping a child with asthma breathe easier. And whereas when accidents and illnesses strike unexpectedly, EMS personnel are the first on the scene, and their timely actions often make the difference between life and death. And whereas EMS technicians, paramedics, and first responders devote countless hours to keeping their communities safe, and whereas EMS agencies are an integral part of our nation's health security strategy, and they help to build community resilience by strengthening all aspects of the emergency response system. Now therefore, I, Scott Copan, Mayor of the Town of Enfield, on behalf of the Town Council, the Town Administration, and the entire community, to hereby proclaim May 18th through the 24th Emergency Medical Services Week while recognizing the inspiring contributions of our EMS practitioners and honor their dedication to serving their town and fellow citizens. Signed today, May 19th, 2014. Chief, I present this to you, and with much gratitude and thanks, on behalf of the entire community.
Thank you, Mayor Copan. Thank you, Mayor Copan and council and Town Administration. It's certainly our pleasure to serve the community, and I believe we serve the community well, combined with the first response of the police department and the fire departments to assist us. I think that the Town of Enfield has one of the best EMS agencies and systems within the state of Connecticut. We're proud to serve, we're glad to serve, and EMS Week focuses on the response, the responsibilities, and the dedication of those providers that serve 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And this happens to be the 40th anniversary of EMS Week, so EMS is no longer just a child, we've become an adult. And I'm also proud to say that it's my 40th year serving in EMS as well. That doesn't mean that I've become an adult, though. I'll let that be known. So, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much. Council, thank you so much for your support, and we look forward to serving the town for infinity.
From infinity and beyond, right? Is that the phrase? So, thank you, Gary. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Aaron. Keep up the great work across our community.
Thank you so much.
So now, council can return to their seats, and I'm gonna turn over the microphone to Deputy Mayor Lee for an introduction.
Good evening. We've invited representatives of the Buzz Robotics team from Fermi High School. Joining us tonight, Brandon Tuie, Elizabeth Donovan, Will Hartel, and Alessia Manzi, if you'd like to come up. We put this together as a little bit of a recap to their season. It's great to kind of see what goes into kicking off the robotics program, which we did earlier in the winter, earlier this year. And the team here is gonna give us an update on how they did in competition and what the robotics program does from here for the rest of the year. Gang, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. All right, so as you introduced us, we are Buzz Robotics. I'm Brendan.
I'm Will.
I'm Alessia.
And I'm Elizabeth.
We had a very successful season this year. And so, Dr. Will, let's talk about our build season.
Over our 45-day build season, our 23 students put in 3,200 work hours. Our 20 mentors put in over 2,000 mentor hours. And even with five snow days, we still managed to build two robots, and all that makes for one amazing experience.
Our first competition was the Grattan District Competition. We had no idea what we were walking into because of the new design, but we did really, really good. We were ranked sixth, and we made it to the quarterfinals. Our win-loss record was 10 to 6. Our second competition was the Suddington District. We seeded second, and we won the Engineering Excellence. We won the Excellence in Engineering Award. We made it to the quarterfinals with a win-loss record of 13 to 4. The Hartford District was our third competition. Our second drive team drove. We made it to, we were ranked third, and we made it to cornerfinals with a win-loss record of 12 to 6.
And then after all of those districts, we made it into the New England District Championships. We were seeded, or ranked 43rd. We made it into quarterfinals, and our record was 4 to 10. And then after that, we traveled to St. Louis, Missouri for Nationals. We made it into finals in our division, but we didn't make it to the biggest one. But we came in second. We were ranked 40th, and our record was 12 to 5. And then we just did a postseason event for Connecticut Championships. We tried a whole new drive team to get others experienced in it, and we had fun training them and getting to know what it was like for others. And to top it off, we have another competition coming up at the end of June for another postseason event.
All right. So then we'll go ahead and show you video from championships.
Just one second, we're gonna lower that screen so the folks in the audience can see. And...
This is from our second finals match. This is the one that we, we were eliminated in finals, but this is the one match that we won, at St. Louis.
Just one second, so the council can save up here.
All right.
Yep. They went to sleep, anyway.
I have the same match card.
Sorry. Hopefully this will get a little better.
Are you gonna be narrating the competition?
I might a little, yeah.
So, let's give them the handheld, so it can get picked up at home.
All right.
Brendan.
All right, so this is us in the middle. Three robots that you can see. We are the Blue Alliance, so all the robots that you can see with blue bumpers on the bottom are working with us, and all the robots that are red are working against us. That's us picking up the ball there. Now, our job this match was to be the middleman. So this robot here throws it over, and our job is to be the middleman to score extra points for when the final robot puts it in the top goal, as you'll see in a few seconds.
Wow. That's cool.
Right? That's the final score there, and we ended up winning that match.
So you want to explain what we just saw?
All right.
Because I know I have a lot of questions.
All right, so basically, the game this year was to get that giant exercise ball from one side of the field into either the low goals, which were those little boxes, or into the top high goal. And that was a way to score points, one way, and another way was to shoot it over that truss you saw in the middle. That scored an additional 10 points. And then the biggest way to add on points was to pass it between multiple robots in the multiple zones you might have seen colored on the field. And the reason why it would start off with one of the robots, and then they pass it over the truss, so that's 10 points, then our job was to take it, take the ball from the human player that caught it, and then send it to the other one, so that earned an extra assist, which is 10 points for two assists. And then that, once the human player on the other side caught it, they'd throw it into the final robot to earn an extra assist, which was now 30 points for an assist. And then the final robot scores into the goal to finish the cycle.
Great. Complicated game this year?
Yes.
It looked it.
It's hard to explain.
So who's the senior among you?
I am.
I am? You are. What? I either just nod up here like last... What's one thing you want to tell us that was kind of the chief lesson you've learned being part of Buzz?
One, it's a lot of fun, and teamwork is key, especially like this year's game. You couldn't win the game without cooperating with the other teams and with your own team. It's just teamwork was key.
And for the others, I mean, is there something that you want to tell us about unique to this year that made it special or more challenging? You covered it?
Yeah, basically.
All right. And how about looking into next year? Anything that you know of in the program gonna make it more unique, or how about just telling us what if kids want to get involved in the robotics program, what they should expect, and how do they reach out to become part of the program?
If they want to get involved, we have, there's plenty of ways to contact us at any of like the town events. We're usually at the Program of Studies Night. We're a lot of the family days at the Town Green. If you're interested, try to get to one of those events and talk to us. We'll do demos at some of the elementary schools this year, and hopefully the middle school, to try to reach out to some of the kids, younger kids. And just expect, it's a fun time, but it's also a lot of work.
Mm-hmm.
It's worth it.
Very good.
A lot of hours.
Lot of hours.
Yeah.
Well, thanks for giving us the update. Congratulations on your season. How many years has this been for Buzz Robotics in Enfield?
This was our 19th year.
19, so big 20 anniversary next year.
Yep.
Good. Well, thanks for joining us tonight.
Thank you. Now, just one more thing.
Sure.
For the future of the team, too, I was talking about the new students coming in that we were expecting. All the, we also have a lot of graduating seniors this year, and I'd just like to take a moment to acknowledge them. We have Connor Desmers, he plans on going to UConn for computer science. We have Christian Blackmorel, who's going to Florida Gulf Coast University for professional golf management.
Ooh.
Austin Uhas is going to Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University for aeronautical sciences. Pete Polus is going to UConn for computer science. Matthew Polus is going into RIT for mechanical engineering technology. I am going to Roger Williams University for mechanical engineering. And Dan Whalen is going to Springfield Technical Community College for engineering.
Awesome. Good round of applause. I know some of the council members may have questions or comments. Councilman Arnoni?
Yeah, you make us very proud, and it's one of the awards of being up here, especially after a hard budget season, and to have you come up here and see what our youth is doing. Thank you very much for the time and the hours you spent. Who actually controls? Who was the controller on that? Do you spread it around, or is it somebody that specialized in it?
For the main competition, which is like what you just saw, I'm one of the drivers along with one of the other seniors, Christian, who's going to Florida Gulf Coast. Then we also have a sophomore on the team who was one of the human players. But that was for, then for, that was for the most of the competition season. Then we also had a separate drive team for the Hartford events, we could get more kids, give them the experience. And then for the off-season events, actually, all us four were the drive team for the most recent event, along with the addition of a couple other kids who got some experience, too.
Looks like it's pretty complicated, too. Almost like the radio-controlled airplane ones are huge. Very impressive. Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Thanks, Tom. Anyone else? Then, on behalf of the council, great job. Thank you so much. I know we all watched your progress throughout the course of the season, and I think they were Twitter feeds and Facebook posts when you were out in St. Louis, and everyone was glued to their phones to see the updates, and you really made Enfield and Enfield Public Schools proud. So congratulations, good luck. Okay. Next item on the agenda is public communications and petitions. If there's anyone in the audience wishing to address the council, ask you to please raise your hand. We'll call on you. You can come forward, state your name and address for the record. Please keep your comments to no more than five minutes. I have a timer. I'll time you. If you hit that 4:30 mark, I'll politely interrupt you and ask you to wrap up. And we ask that you please refrain from the use of personalities. And I saw three hands go up, so I'm gonna do Jennifer first, ladies first, and then the two gentlemen right here, and then we'll open it up to the folks at Crescent Lake.
Thank you. I'm Jennifer Moncuse. I live at Seventeen Booth Road. I am wearing many hats this evening. I am a taxpayer, I'm a parent of school-aged children, and I am also the Parent Engagement Coordinator for Kite. It's been a difficult weekend for me, as I'm sure it has been for many of you. You all received emails from me over the course of the weekend begging for additional funding for education. First, I'd like to say that I did not get my information from Facebook or other questionable sources, but rather from conversations that I had privately with multiple Board of Ed members. And I welcomed responses from a couple of the town council members, but your responses were in direct opposition to the statements made to me by the Board of Ed. It seems that there is an issue of mistrust between the Board of Ed and the town council. And I don't know if the issues are partisan, if they're personal, or if they're professional, but the outcome of this mistrust is a shortfall in funding to our education system, which will not allow the Board of Ed to maintain the status quo. It remains to be seen how the Board of Ed will elect to spend the appropriation that you gave to them this evening, but one way or another, Enfield's children will pay the Certainly no cuts can be made in areas or programs that are mandated by the state, and though I have been assured by members of the town council that the Board of Ed would not consider cutting full-day kindergarten, as late as this evening, Board of Ed members have shared with me communications that they've had with the superintendent's office, and no decisions have been made in that area yet. So whether full-day kindergarten is eliminated, or a team at JFK is eliminated, or high school classes with low enrollment such as art or AP classes are eliminated, or class size is increased, or sports are eliminated, or some combination thereof, Enfield's children will pay the price. I agree that these are difficult issues, but to me, it seems that at the heart of the matter is this issue of mistrust touched on earlier this evening by Councilman Lee. The Board of Ed told you the minimum amount of money that they needed in order to maintain the status quo, and the town council chose not to fund the Board of Ed at that level. Of course, that means that cuts will have to be made. I ask that you work together with the Board of Ed to resolve this matter of mistrust so that these issues don't continue in future years, because the outcome of it is not acceptable to children with young families, to families with young children. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Mr. Messenger?
Yeah. Robert Messenger, for King's Court. I think you all have a copy of the bill I got from my source.
That's what this is right here. Does it come?
Yeah, that's ours. There you go. Sorry, guys.
Okay?
Go ahead.
Yeah. Incidentally, it's paid. I don't have a problem with the amount of money. I have a problem with the fact that we pay a lot of money in this town for schools to educate people, and it appears that we couldn't find anybody smart enough in this town to process the billing. Somebody in this town could've used a job, and instead, part of it comes from Shelton, Connecticut, and the rest goes to somewhere in Maine. I don't understand why we're not employing somebody here. You know, instead of running food banks, or having suppers somewhere at a church, at least two people could've had a job. When you bring a business into town, one of the first things you tell us is how proud you are that you brought some jobs into town. Here, you had a chance to create something, you didn't. I don't understand it, you know? I understand that the people in Maine are doing their part for free, but it's not really free because you're losing out on the interest or the investment potential of this money that they're getting. And I just don't see how it's beneficial to the town. People here could've had a job, they could've been taxpayers. Instead, we're gonna end up supporting them through unemployment. That's all I have to say. It just, it bothered me that we could've done better on this than what we did. You could've done better as representatives than what you did. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mike Gully, 3 Edmund Lane. I do apologize, I had pictures and the printing facility had messed up. I'm here to talk about the roads on 3 Edmund Lane, Cheryl and Stephen. I understand that there's roads all over the city that are in need. We were on the 2009 plan, and we were always told you're just gonna get a skim coating. Now, my one neighbor who's not here, so I won't bring in names, was told recently that we're too expensive. We do not have storm drains on our street. For years, and the pictures would show you, driveways are being popped up because it's ponding. You'll find that in the winter. If you look along Stephen and Edmund Lane, it's sheet of ice, and so forth, and it's now at the point where the water has gone underneath, and the road is literally falling apart. I understand there's other roads like this. We do not have storm drains. And I was talking to my neighbors who are behind, who were there when the roads were put in, and they were told then that storm drains were gonna have to be put in. So, I will provide pictures to the mayor. I was disturbed when my neighbor was talking to the individual from the town who said, "It's now gonna cost too much to take care of us." So, we couldn't get a skim coat five years ago, and now it's too expensive and they could skim coat 12 other roads. And again, I won't bring names in it because my neighbor's not here, but that's disturbing. So, the question is, if you're devaluing my property, what do I get back? Again, no storm drains, no nothing, you know? It's very frustrating. So, I would love to, if nothing else, have yous all stop down, especially after a really rainy day. I mean, thank God, Enfield's full of sand, because that's what sucks up all the water. But again, we're now at the point where everything's popping up, a lot of new little kids in the neighborhood. If you look at the street sign of Stephen and Edmund Lane, actually, what you'll see is how it's bent, because about four or five years ago, the town had to come down with front loaders and everything, because the whole road was nothing but ice, and the big front loader actually started sliding. And that's why the street sign is like it is. So anyways, I'm here to ask you to consider taking care of Edmund Lane. I know we're a small street, but you know what? We do pay our taxes as well as everybody else. Understand, being in the backstreet, you don't get everything everybody else does, but again, everywhere I go, I still see storm drains and everything else, just like what everybody else has. I appreciate your time. I'd be glad to drop off the pictures. I have about 11 5x7s. So, that's all I have.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on up.
Thank you. Hello, my name's Angela Foss, and I live at 43 Lake Drive.
Dave Tuttle, 34 Crescent Beach Drive.
We're here tonight because we're very concerned about the roads in Crescent Lake. And we are on the schedule for 2010, at least. I have the blueprint of that. And for some reason, we have not been treated, our roads have not, and nothing's been done to our roads. I have lived in my house now for 29 years, and in all that time, nothing has happened at all on Lake Road, Lake Drive. This seems to me like we have to be the squeaky wheel in Enfield. I did call the town and ask them what they would do about our roads, and they told me, "I need to come to you, and talk to you, and present to you about our roads." But you shouldn't have people coming when there's an emergency on the roads. Our roads are treacherous, very dangerous. And there should be a better system on how you deal with what roads you are going to improve, what roads you're gonna repair. Our roads now need to be totally pulled up, and a new road needs to be put in on all of our streets. Somebody's going to get hurt. We have a parade on the Fourth of July, and everybody walks from one end of the lake all the way down to the other end of the lake. And this year, I can see, my mom and my dad are here in the audience, hi, Mom and Dad, and they're in their 80s, my father-in-law and mother-in-law, they're in their 80s. I can see somebody falling this Fourth of July, and you having a major lawsuit because of that. The sad thing about this is that I've lived in Enfield my whole life, and I remember the fondest, some of the fondest memories I had were riding my bike up and down Brook Road, that's where I lived. And I never had a concern about whether the road was going to be safe for me. My parents never worried about that. Goodness, I never had a helmet either. We never had these concerns. I have a grandson who's four years old. He comes and visits me every week. I want him to be able to learn how to ride his bike on my road. I don't think that that's asking too much. And we won't be able to show him how to ride his bike, because there's no way I would let him ride on those roads and learn how to ride his bike on his roads, on those roads. The other thing I wanted to say is that, besides it being dangerous, and besides the fact that our roads have not been touched in over 29 years, when you are a typical homeowner, and you have a yearly list of repairs, and you have to prioritize those lists of repairs, sometimes, there's an unforeseen emergency. Well, we've been here. We've been hoping that you would do something for us, but nothing has been done. So now, we are becoming an emergency, but we're not unforeseen. So, I'm requesting that this year, you put into the budget that you will redo the lakes, the lake roads in Crescent Lake. I'd ask you all to take a ride down there and see what the roads look like. I would welcome that. On your way down, on the left and the right side, you'll see the new pipeline that the water company is putting in for us, because they too thought we were, you know, we're just a small little community, we're on the edge of the Enfield, Connecticut line, and they kind of ignored us. Our water was poor. And so, I had to work a year on that, but thanks to Representative Alexander and other people, we now have a million, almost a million-dollar pipeline being put in along our road so that we can actually have healthy water. I wanted to just read something from Horton, here's a who, because this is how I feel. We feel like that little speck of dust. "Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor," Horton called, "Mr. Mayor, you've got to prove now that you really are there. So, call a big meeting, get everyone out. Make every who holler, make every who shout, make every who scream. If you don't, every who is going to end up in a Beesel Nut Stoop." And down on the dust speck, the scared little mayor, quick, called a big meeting in Whoville in Town Square, and his people cried loudly, they cried out in fear, "We are here, we are here, we are here, we are here." And we are Crescent Lake, and we are part of the Enfield community. We have a petition with 107 signatures on it, and I'll read it to you. There are only five families we couldn't, that weren't home. "We are the citizens of the Crescent Lake and the town of Enfield, Connecticut, petition the town to pave our streets. All of our streets in our community are in dire need of immediate attention, including Crescent Beach Drive, Brookside Road, Oak Road, and Lake Drive. Our community has always taken pride in the appearance of our neighborhood and the safety of our residents. We work hard to maintain our properties for the good of all. The present condition of these town-owned roads is disgraceful. Our tax money should be used to make the appropriate repairs to restore safety to our neighborhood. Many residents have expressed their concerns to the town via telephone, and only limited temporary patches have been made to date, and no plans of paving in the very near future. I, the undersigned resident, request the town of Enfield take immediate action to pave the roads of Crescent Lake." Here is the map of what you are going to do in 2010, and there we are. And I know we're a little speck, but we're still there on the map. I have some pictures to show you also. If you wanna take, if you wanna share these pictures?
Sure.
Sets of pictures. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Councilman Tuttle?
All right. Thank you. We do appreciate your time.
Thank you, Angela. Thank you, Dave. Anyone else? All right, thank you very much. We will go to Councilman Communications and Petitions. Councilman Communications, anyone? Councilman Mangini?
Thank you. Just a couple of events that did take place past couple of weeks. First, I wanted to talk about the Rotary Awards Dinner that Mayor Copan and I had the privilege of presenting Paul Harris Awards. Linda Bridge, Lori Gates, Jennifer Smith, and Shannon Grant were our recipients, and we were very honored to have the privilege of presenting the awards to these fine ladies. Also, on Saturday, we were able to present five Eagles, Troops 888 and 108, to receive their Eagle Awards. Very hard-working diligent young boys, very well-deserving of the awards. And I want to share a story with my fellow council members and the public on an event that occurred on Grandparents' Day at our Montessori School. One of our school security officers did something that I believe to be very extraordinary for a child, and I want to share this with everyone. I was at a meeting in Hartford. A person approached me after learning that I'm from Enfield, and told me the story about this wonderful officer who was approached by a little boy, asking if he would be his grandfather, because he didn't have one. And I understand the officer may in fact have been Barry Berger. But this officer made it his business to call the PD to get a replacement for a short period. He went home, changed his clothes into casual attire, came back, and stood in as this little boy's grandfather. And I have to share that story, because I think that is just truly amazing, and this is the caliper of individuals that we have working in our schools on our behalf with our children. So I wanted to share that. And then finally, I do have a concern I need to share with town staff through our mayor, to Matt, maybe to Public Works at some point, but it was brought to my attention recently that maybe we need to go to the Mark Twain recreational area, check the dugout for needles. I'm understanding from reliable sources that there are heroin needles, and there are sleep, homeless sleep, homeless people sleeping there, and this is as recently as Wednesday of this past week. Also, we might wanna check Powder Hollow, because I also received a report of a similar set of circumstances. So I think maybe we need to get out there and do some checking on that. So, I just wanted to pass it along. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Councilman Communications, Donna?
I just had one thing, like on this, I have a, was brought up to me on the sewer usage. I know people in town have not received their bill. Are there anybody who has not received a bill or in May? Or in May? You know, oh, okay, they'll answer later?
Sure, he'll answer under the...
Okay. Cause they called the town hall, and the town hall directed them to call Sheldon for the...
I just had one thing, like on this, I have a, was brought up to me on the sewer usage. I know people in town have not received their bill. Are there anybody who has not received a bill or in May? We're in May. You know, oh, okay, they'll answer later?
Sure, he'll answer under the...
Okay, because they called the town hall, and the town hall directed them to call Sheldon for the billing department, and I was wondering if perhaps we couldn't get a call forwarding mechanism, that when a call is taken here at the town hall, that they just call forward it, rather than having the citizen have to call somewhere else? And I did want to remind everybody that leaf bags can only be used in the fall for leaf pickup, that anything put out now is going to still be by the curb. I've been driving by a lot of homes that have the craft bags out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Joey?
Yeah, through the mayor, to town manager. Matt, do you know when we're going to have our meeting with Buckhorn? So, we can get all that straightened out? And to Mr. Messenger, we, we had a lengthy conversation on keeping stuff in, in town, and I really think that businesses in town should get an advantage over businesses out of town with either a couple extra points or something that we can keep to work here. So, I agree with you, and we had a lengthy discussion on that sewer fee. Thank you.
Councilman Denny?
Yeah, I agree, Mr. Messenger, with you. One of my things that I had mentioned before, that I thought that we could hire two individuals for the town hall, and I hope we're looking into that, as opposed to hiring a company to bill us. Oh, and also, don't forget, the 25th is Memorial Day Parade here in Enfield.
Thanks, Ed. Carol?
Through, through the mayor to Matt, under your communications, Matt, or maybe, is Jonathan here tonight? I don't see, oh, yes, there he is, I can see him. Maybe he can give us a status on the lake roads, as far as where they are on the list. I know that the pictures they submitted, the roads looked pretty bad, and Bill and I were just chatting on the side, and really honestly, neither one of us have heard any complaints. This is the first I've heard of, of those roads being, and the pictures show it, they're, they're really atrocious. So, just a status, and if we have a dollar number on those roads where they fall on the list, if it has to come under the next referendum, that, that the roads that we have coming up. That's it.
Thanks, Carol. Ed?
Yeah, also, I've, I've been down to Edmund and Stevens Lane, because a gentleman who spoke had called me, and I told him to come here. And there is no storm drains, and I'm wondering why there never has been. That's all.
Okay. Bill, you're next?
Yeah. Bless you.
Bless you.
I did want to also acknowledge some Eagle Scout, some gentlemen that received their Eagle Scout awards in the last few days. I had the pleasure of attending the Troop 818 ceremony yesterday, where they convened Eagle Scout awards to Matthew and Ryan Koppinger, Chris Fortin, Chad Miller, and Trey Pierce. It was quite a ceremony to have five from one troop, and wanted to thank them for inviting me. Also, would like to make a motion to suspend the rules and move the following items to miscellaneous, and potentially proceed to a vote this evening. And the items are A1 through A6, D, E, F, G, H, and I, and J, as well, please.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Lee, seconded by Councilman Mangini, to move those items to miscellaneous. Any discussion? Sensing none, by show of hands, all those in favor? Those opposed? Any abstentions? Unanimous? All moved to miscellaneous. Anything else, Bill?
No, I think that's it.
Anyone else? I have just a couple. Cindy had mentioned the Rotary, Paul Harris Fellow Dinner. Did you mention who received the awards?
Yes.
I did.
You did? Okay. So, congrats to Linda Bridge, Shannon Roberto, Lori Gates, and Jennifer Smith. Incredible night. This past weekend, the Enfield Athletic Hall of Fame held their golf tournament, sold out the golf tournament. It was yesterday, beautiful weather, nice day to hit that frustrating white ball around a golf course, so, good day. Today, had the pleasure to help celebrate the 104th birthday of a resident. She's now residing at Blair Manor on Hazard Avenue. She was born in 1910, May 19th, 1910, Elizabeth Alaman, and just her whole family was there, residents of Blair Manor. Quite a milestone to, to achieve. Imagine what has changed in the world since she was first born.
Since she was 50.
Exactly, since she was 50, too. Councilman Denny had mentioned that the Memorial Day Parade is this Sunday, and it's at 1:00. Kicks off normal parade route with a ceremony here on the town green, led by our Veterans' Council. And the council's quarterly public informational meeting is, and of course, I didn't write down the date, it is, I think it's Thursday, yes, it's Thursday, May 29th, at 7:00 PM at Enfield Street School. Quarterly public informational meeting, Enfield Street School, Thursday, May 29th, 7:00 PM. And just to address, besides looking at Stevens, Cheryl, Edmund, and Crescent Lake, Mr. Messenger, although it, it says Shelton, Connecticut, and Lewiston, Maine, and there's, there's really a, a decision that the council has to make as to how you award business. Now, those two firms that you, that are on your water bill, went through a competitive bid process, and were the successful bidders. So on the one hand, the council's charged with protecting your taxpayer dollars and making sure that high-ticket items go through a bid process, and so that's why those addresses are there. Either firms in Enfield that bid on the business were not the successful bidder, were a higher bidder, or chose not to come forward to bid on, on the service. So the Lewiston, Maine address is TD Bank, correct, Matt? It's TD Bank? And they handle our tax payments, and, and that's why the sewer use fee bills go there. So, you just have to be careful with what you ask. So if you say that you'd like an Enfield address on these, it may be at a higher cost. And that may be acceptable to the taxpayers, but the process has been is to put these services out to bid, and go with the most responsible, lowest bidder. And that's consistent across a lot of our, or all of our bids, per our charter and the financial requirements that our staff have to meet. So I don't think it, no exception to Councilman Denny and Councilman Bosco, it's not just as easy as saying it has to be an Enfield business. Bidding is the process that we follow, and we don't restrict our bids just to Enfield businesses. So these were the lowest, most responsible bidders. It may be acceptable to pay a higher cost for the same service, but that's not the process that we followed for many years. And that completes my comments. Anyone else? Okay. We will move to town manager's report and communications. Matt?
Good evening.
Good evening.
A short report, just to answer some of the questions that came up regarding lake roads, and, and we could have Jonathan come up, but I can tell you from knowledge, that the lake roads were identified as part of the Roads 2010. As councils aware, as we made the presentation last year, you know, the money is at an end. And so, unfortunately, they didn't rank high enough to, to get done in this go-around. Just to give you, or low enough, right, yeah, rank high enough in need, low enough, yeah, in score. You know, we have already started, as councils aware, the process for the next Roads project. Just to kind of give you an understanding of what we're dealing with before we get to the presentation, staff presentation to council, which we need to schedule, by the way. You know, to bring all the roads up to a near-perfect score would require us to spend over $100 million in the next two to three years. And again, those council members that have been part of the council, as part of the Roads 2000, Roads 2005, Roads 2010, we always start with those big numbers. And we realize that that really isn't a practical option for us, because, you know, we're talking about a very large increase in the mill rate to be able to afford that. And by the time it gets to you, you know, that has been whittled down to a more realistic number, or at least a ballpark number, and then when we sit down and go through all the presentations, and, and you make a final decision on what those numbers are and what the, the goals are, you know, it's in an affordable range for us. And the last, you know, the very first one ended up costing the town about 23 million, the second one is about 25 million. This one, that we're currently in the process of finishing up, was about $27 million. We have a lot of, a lot of issues. You know, we've, we've heard from Buckhorn, we've heard from Lakes, we've heard from Green Manor, you know, we've heard of the needs across the whole town. And, and again, I think it's that balancing act that we could take care of all those needs, but it comes at a cost, and you have to be willing to pay for that to be able to do it. And, and I think, you know, the, the council historically has taken a very conservative approach. You know, we are one of the few towns in Connecticut that does what we do, in terms of, you know, putting it out to referendum and spending, you know, on an average of over $5 million a year on our roads. It's a tough commitment, because you see that as part of the budget, what we have to, you know, put forward, and, and what we will be putting forward, because part of the analysis that you need to understand, and the public needs to understand, is that, you know, we are undergoing a lot of capital projects. We have, you know, a $103 million project that, you know, the town's going to be responsible for 35 million. You know, that's going to be bonded over 20 years, that's going to increase our debt, you know, our roads program. The majority of our roads programs are bonded, that's going to increase our debt. We have a lot of capacity in our debt. We have a lot of capacity, but we don't have a great capacity to pay for it. And so, it's not a matter of can we afford, in our debt structure, to do something. The question is, can we afford out of our pocketbook to pay for what we're going to do? And that's, I think, the thing that people have to understand, that we can't just do everything we want to do. We have to do something that makes sense financially long-term, because, again, as we saw tonight with the, the budget earlier, and, and every budget process going forward is that it's, you know, the money unfortunately is not there to do everything we want to do, and there has to be a lot of decisions made. And, and, you know, unfortunately, you can see the results in some of our infrastructure, you can see the results, you know, going forward, unfortunately. So, we're aware of it, we know where it is, you know, are there ways to minimize, you know, or maximize the dollars we do have to do something out there? That's something I'll sit down with Jonathan and discuss with him, if there are some interim, you know, monies available to do some improvements, but not full-depth reconstruction, which, you know, I'm not an engineer, as I've told you, but I can tell you that's, that road, those roads need to be fully rebuilt, there's no doubt. No, she did not, but I can probably tell you what they look like without seeing those. I've been out there. But again, you know, those, those are symptomatic of a lot of our roads. You know, talking to some people earlier, you know, there's roads that, that, you know, I can, I can show you other roads in the, the town that are probably as bad, if not worse than that, and you wonder if they've ever been paved before based upon what they look like. So, I, I think it's, it's difficult to explain to residents, and I understand that, that, you know, they don't see the results of their tax dollars right out their front door, but it's not because we're not doing something, it's that, again, you know, there's a lot of decisions being made, long-term, financial, for the best of the town, that councils, you know, make. And, and that's what you should be doing, looking out for the long term. And again, we are doing something that a lot of towns are not doing. So, you know, our roads, although we see them on a, you know, a daily basis in poor condition, if you go to other towns, and I hate to use comparisons, you know, but it's true, we're doing more than what a lot of towns in the state of Connecticut are doing. And so that says something about your commitment to the infrastructure, it's just not making its way to everybody's front doors what we like it to be.
Bill?
Admit, you may have told us this in the past, and, and I'm sure there's a lot more detail down the road as we get closer to needing a referendum. Are we looking at a strategy that allows the department to get specific and hold true to roads that we assume are in a referendum package? Is there a way to go about structuring the preparation for the package so that if we adopt five projects of five roads each, that we are guaranteed that those projects will be completed in the next cycle? I know we've talked about the frustration going into shortfalls, but how, how can we go about getting things prepared so that the voters and the residents in these neighborhoods understand that if they vote yes on a project, it's going to be completed in that cycle?
I, I agree with you on that, and I think we're on the same page, because we probably have talked about this, that, 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 you know, one of the shortfalls I see in, in the Roads projects is that we throw out there a lot of streets, and we say, you know, we're going to do these roads. And, you know, the reality is, when you get to the end of the money, the end of the money, you're done. You can't do any more roads. And all three that has been done has been short of what the goal was. And so, you know, the challenge is, how do you stake out then what a reasonable goal is, so you can say, these are the streets that we're going to get done? But still make sure that, you know, the public understands, because they don't see their road, that it's still worthwhile endeavor to vote for. And I think that, that really has been the strategy in the past, is to try to, to show that we're going to be doing a lot, but, you know, we never get there because of a number of different reasons. And I think we've corrected some of those failings in the way we're going about this one, as you'll see. You know, it's the estimates of, of repair costs, where, you know, in the past, they had not taken into consideration all the work we do. They were looking at just portions of the work, and so it gave the appearance that, that we could do more roads, but when you actually, you know, throw in the drainage, and throw in the sidewalks, and, you know, throw in things that weren't part of the initial estimates, they start, you know, reducing the amount of lane miles that you can either reconstruct or repave, or provide some type of preservation to those. We're correcting that, and so I think you're going to have a better understanding of what those costs are, and, and I would agree, I'd love to be able to say, here's, here's a project package that we know that we can get done, here's, you know, the next project packages that we would do if the money allows. That's a philosophical thing that, you know, we'll have to talk about when we get there, and it's something that we will be getting there very shortly with you, hopefully.
Quick follow-up, is, is the implementation of storm drainage into a neighborhood a WPCA role, or is that typically just all part of a highway construction? In terms of pots of funding, or grant dollars, or things of that nature? If, if you're looking to put in storm drains where there aren't any currently, is that classified as a different type of project from any municipality?
Yeah, you know, the, the WPCA handles sanitary sewer, and so generally, they don't get into the storm sewer element of it. You know, there's, there, and I don't know how many actually in Connecticut have done this, but, you know, there are stormwater utilities out there, all across the United States, with the, the stormwater regulations that came down a number of years ago. A number of communities across the United States develop stormwater utilities, much like sanitary sewer, but, you know, you don't have that clean user type of way to go back, and so they would just assess properties within, you know, the communities for that. We don't have that. So, yes, it falls upon the town of Enfield, and we're directly DPW, to, you know, make sure that we look at those things as we put roads back together in the town of Enfield. And, and, you know, that, that's, you know, I think councilperson Denny asked, you know, why, why aren't there storm drains in certain roads? Well, you know, those roads we talked, you know, it was brought up, aren't the only ones that do not have storm drains. You know, we talked about during budget process, North Street, and, you know, there are areas of North Street does not have any storm drains. There are a lot of roads in the town of Enfield that have no storm drains, because back in the 50s, 60s... the 50s, 60s and early 70s, when they were put in, they tried to reduce the cost. Storm drains are an expensive element to add to a road. So they decided just, well, you know, we'll just kind of tilt the road this way, it'll all run off and there's nothing there anyway, so we'll just run into a vacant field. Well, then, you know, that vacant field gets developed and now you have a bigger issue. And, and so that's why roads in Enfield don't have storm drains because they never were required to in the past. And as we take them over, we realize, geez, it'd be good to have storm drains because the underlying surface that we have here in Enfield, it's kind of important to have that, you know, underdrain for our roads.
Thank you. Tom?
It's also complicated at the lake region now. If we try to put storm drains in that region with the environmental laws, just to be able to get an outfall permit, it will be incredible. I know with critter curbs, we have, you have to take into account, it's, it's going to be even more expensive in that area just to get a drainage system in because it's going to be so tightly regulated.
Yeah.
So that's another issue.
Well, it's, and, and, you know, the, the balance on that is that, that even surface water ultimately runs at some point into the lake. And so, you know, the question is, is it better for it to, to, you know, funnel its way or direct it into it? I mean, those, again, those are all engineering questions that would have to be asked and answered during the, the design because, again, you know, that water ends up there. And, you know, the question is, what's the best way to get it there so it, you know, doesn't impact the roads and impact and create safety issues as well? So that's why there are engineers.
Anything else for Matt on this issue?
And let me, as we talk about the, the next roads referendum, we do need to do a presentation to council. Again, trying to keep it within the, the timeframe that we have because, again, if this ends up as a referendum, that means council has to have a referendum put forward by the first, at the latest, the first meeting in September. So kind of working it back, you know, we generally have the public hearing, the, the first and generally only meeting in August. And usually put that refer, or that, excuse me, that public hearing on the agenda in the first meeting in July. So working back, that means in June, we have to meet at the latest to make the presentation because I, I don't think this is going to be a one-meeting issue because there are a lot of issues, as you can kind of see, and a lot of philosophy I think we have to set straight so we can go forward. You know, if we tried to keep it to our regular meeting schedule, it, it would be difficult to do.
Right.
Because I, I think, you know, this is probably a two-hour-plus discussion. So that gets us to scheduling a special meeting. You know, staff can be ready as early as next week. So anytime in, you know, I would like to see in the next two weeks to have that special meeting for the roads program. And to answer then the question about Buckhorn, you know, I would envision that we do that meeting following that discussion. So council cannot, because, you know, I, I think the concern that I have is just to have a meeting, you know, will not show any motion forward. And so you're going to have a lot of people still frustrated that we're not taking action, but at least understanding what, what the bigger picture is and what can be done in the upcoming referendum potential would be very beneficial. So that's why I kind of see the need to have that, that presentation and discussion first and then the meeting with Buckhorn.
So we have a leadership meeting on the 28th, which is a Wednesday. Now, we have the quarterly public informational meeting the next Thursday. Do people mind having two meetings in a row? And would you be ready, you know, in a week and two days for the, the discussion on roads?
Is Jonathan still sitting upright?
He's smiling.
Okay, yeah.
But he hasn't turned over, fallen off the chair.
Yeah, I didn't hear anything drop over there, so we're, we're good. Yes. No, it's, you know, there, where, and actually, you know, we're, I believe, have our, our prep meeting this week, so.
Does that work Wednesday, the 28th at 6:30? Right, we would only need an hour for leadership, right? So 6:30. Everyone good? Wednesday, the 28th?
We have a special meeting?
Special meeting, Roads 2015.
Yep.
6:30.
Thank you. That's great. And just real quick, I think everybody, did everybody get, I've been having some problems with my email, I've found out. So I don't know if anybody's receiving any of the emails that I send out.
I don't know, I didn't get them.
Hard to tell.
I haven't responded to them.
Well, I'll go back and resend all, all those, but the one that I wanted to see if you received, because at the last meeting, there was a question asked about Sky Street, and I did send out an update on that one.
Yeah.
Yay.
We're not getting your, or I'm the one not getting your emails on one of my email accounts if you have an attachment on it.
Okay.
It goes to enfield.org, it goes to my work, it doesn't go home.
Right.
And it's COX, so I don't know if, so it might be a, a COX communication issue with your, with your email address.
Okay. So anyhow, just briefly, staff has met with the homeowner. They've put together a plan to attempt to try to address that drainage issue with the water actually running back from the street onto the property owner. And the last item, I think we've talked about this, state of Connecticut, DOT is looking to resurface portions of Route 5 from East Windsor to now Oliver Street. One of the things that they put out there was the potential to take where the four lane is as part of Route 5 and reduce it to two lanes. They have looked at that, and we said, put something together to let us look at it. They looked at it and they feel that they can't safely do that. So they're still going to be restriping four lanes onto that, but they have agreed to include both directions, bike lanes. So they'll widen the shoulders, effectively narrowing down a little bit the travel lanes to allow for the bike lanes to be put both north and south in that area. And so that, that really connects a large area of, of the town residents to Enfield Street where we then have safe passage, at least on the sidewalks. But, you know, our strategy as, as the state redoes their roads, especially the main roads like Route 5, to allow us to get bike lanes on there. So, and that's the last thing I had.
Okay. Questions for Matt?
Just a quick.
Go ahead, Carol.
Just a quick one, Matt. Did they talk about any sort of reconstruction for that intersection of Oliver and Route 5? They didn't talk about trying to improve that?
We, we talked to them, and I can't remember exactly when it was brought up last, but we reached out to them to find out what their plans were for that intersection. And I, and I couldn't find the email that we received back from, but I'm still looking for that. Effectively, they said they, you know, looked at it at some point in the past and didn't feel that the intersection warranted any additional changes, whether it would be a light there or reconfiguration. So it's one of those things that I think we just have to keep their attention on to make sure that they, they at least keep addressing the changes or any changes that might happen.
Do they, do they have any reports from our police department from that intersection?
Yeah, they, they get, you know, when, when they do warranty of an intersection, they pull all the different, you know, accident reports, the types of accidents, the damage, the loss of life, injuries and all that, when they do that warranty. And again, I, that email I know outlined when they had done that the last time, and it was within the last five years, I'm pretty sure, from my recollection. And it just, it didn't have what they would require for, you know, a lighted intersection or even a reconstruction of it. And, and I think, you know, we see it on a daily basis, they see it as a bunch of statistics. And the one thing that statistics don't show are the, the near misses, which, you know, are there.
Right.
I mean, it's rarely do I get to that intersection and not see near misses, so.
Can you get us copy of the email, Matt?
Yep, I'm, I am looking for that. Yep, will do.
Thank you.
Yep.
Bill?
If I could piggyback that, one, one thing that they're not getting from the statistics is how much the maintenance of that boulevard, four-lane boulevard stretch plays on the safety at that intersection. And it's already out of control.
Yep.
Both from the Oliver intersection, but more importantly, the direction reversal gaps and the U-turn gaps that are along that way. You cannot see oncoming traffic attempting to make that U-turn. And it's, I mean, like I said, it's, it's already very difficult. So if, I know we have a good rapport with our regional guys, if, if we could let them know that it's already at that stage, that'd be helpful.
Will do.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else have any questions for Matt? Thanks, Matt. Town attorney report, Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to give an update on the charter revision commission. We've had two meetings since the last council meeting and a, the public hearing on that. Their report is due this Friday, so we have hopefully the last meeting tomorrow night. They'll be putting their final, hopefully the final charter revision provisions, proposals to the council and have those filed by Friday. There was some additional work they wanted to do following the comments that were made at the public hearing, and we hope to have that wrapped up tomorrow. But we have two more days before that and Friday, so. And that's it. And then just actually one, if I could indulge everyone, this Friday from 6 to 8 at the Enfield Senior Center, a good friend of mine and his band, Bigfoot Melvin, will be playing with a lot of swing, blues, rockabilly, and RBQ-type stuff. So early start time, 6 to 8 for the senior center and an early exit, so.
Well, it might not be, it might be an early exit from the senior center, but there's other places to go afterwards.
That's true. It was a good reason to start off your evening in Enfield.
Are you going to be there?
I'm going to be.
Away?
Away.
Okay.
I've seen them play though, they're very good.
Thanks for the plug. Questions for Kevin? Just on, on Kevin, on charter revision, and I, I might be putting you on the spot, but if you can now frame the timeline for the council, do you have that at all? Or if you don't, if we could get a reminder email put out to say, okay, charter revision has hit their milestone of Friday. Now what are the next points for us? Because it now comes to us.
Correct.
I think we can refer back to them and just relay out the timeframe.
Yes.
So we're thinking about it.
I'll get that out to everybody tomorrow morning.
Great. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. Reports of special committees of the council, Enfield High School Renovation Building Committee, Donna, Gina, any updates? None?
Meeting Thursday.
Meeting Thursday, groundbreaking a couple of weeks ago. Bids are coming in under, under projections, knock on wood. All right. Any other reports of special committees? Bill?
If, Scott through to Matt, if I could get dates in late June for a Development Services Committee meeting, I'd like to, that agenda to include a discussion about empty and abandoned properties kind of in limbo, particularly those being held by the Bank of America. And I would love to work with Courtney to see if we can't get a representative from the organization here.
Good luck.
Hopefully can, we can discuss that offline. Thank you.
All right. Any other? Carol?
Seeing that we're on the subcommittee bandwagon here. Matt, we had a tentative second meeting for the general governments for the update on the insurance. Can we schedule that just so we have an idea of what's going on with the bids that went out for that?
Yeah. And the bids are due in June 6, and we are planning on having that meeting the following week.
Okay, perfect.
If that's okay.
I'll, I'll take it offline with you. We'll figure it out.
Yep.
Anyone else? Very good. Old Business Appointments, Town Council Appointed, Items 1 through, we got Items 1 through 18, but is there a motion to remove Item 12 from the table?
Motion.
By Cindy, Councilman Mangini, seconded by Councilman Arnoni. All those in favor? Those opposed? Item's been removed from the table. Is there a nomination? Cindy?
I'd like to place the name of John Fox for the reappointment to Revitalization Committee.
Second.
Motioned and seconded. Is there a motion to close nominations? By Councilman Stokes?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Mangini. All those in favor of closing nominations? By a show of hands. Those opposed? Nominations are closed. Any discussion? Sensing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Stokes?
Oh, John Fox.
Councilman Susak?
Four.
Councilman Arnoni?
John Fox.
Councilman Bosco?
He's out. Councilman Sikala?
John Fox.
Councilman Denny?
John Fox.
Councilman Hall?
Four.
Mayor Copan?
John Fox.
Deputy Mayor Lee?
Four.
Councilman Mangini?
John Fox.
There's nine in favor, none against, no abstentions.
And is there a motion to remove Item 17 from the table?
No.
By Councilman Arnoni, seconded by Councilman Hall. All those in favor? By a show of hands. Those opposed? Item's been removed from the table. Is there a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Earl Stallings.
Nomination for Earl Stallings by Councilman Arnoni, seconded by Councilman Denny. Is there a motion to close nominations?
Close.
By Councilman Stokes, seconded by Councilman Mangini. All those in favor of closing nominations? Those opposed? Nominations are closed. Any discussion? Sensing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Stokes?
Earl Stallings.
Councilman Susak?
Four.
Councilman Arnoni?
Earl Stallings.
Councilman Bosco is still out. Councilman Sikala?
Earl Stallings.
Councilman Denny?
Earl Stallings.
Councilman Hall?
Earl Stallings.
Mayor Copan?
Earl Stallings.
Deputy Mayor Lee?
Earl Stallings.
Councilman Mangini?
Earl Stallings.
There's nine in favor, none against, no abstentions.
That completes council appointments under Old Business. Appointments from the town manager remain on the table. And Items C, D, and E remain on the table. We move to New Business Appointments. Town Council Appointed, Item 3, Cultural Arts Commission. Is there a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Yvonne Wallenberg.
I'll second that.
Nomination by Councilman Mangini, seconded by Councilman Arnoni.
Motion to close?
Motion to close by Deputy Mayor Lee, seconded by Councilman Stokes. All those in favor of closing nominations? Those opposed? Nominations are closed. Any discussion? Sensing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Stokes?
Four.
Councilman Susak?
Four.
Councilman Arnoni?
Yvonne Wallenberg.
Councilman Bosco?
Four.
Councilman Sikala?
Yvonne Wallenberg.
Councilman Denny?
Yvonne Wallenberg.
Councilman Hall?
It's over the race taxes.
Yvonne Wallenberg.
Mayor Copan?
Yvonne Wallenberg.
Deputy Mayor Lee?
Yvonne Wallenberg.
Councilman Mangini?
Yvonne Wallenberg.
There's ten in favor, none against, no abstentions.
That's right.
If I didn't hear her name, I would say.
Yeah. Okay, that completes Appointments, Town Council. Appointments to the manager moves to the next agenda. Discussion of 350 Enfield Street, that moves to the next agenda, correct? Yes? So that completes New Business. We move to Items for Discussion. We've moved Items 1 through the Consent to Miscellaneous, Items D through J to Miscellaneous. Item K, Item K is a resolution approving the collective bargaining agreement with ASME Local 1029. This is a, this is a proposed collective bargaining agreement that will be posted on the town's website tomorrow and will be available in the town clerk's off, office for inspection. And council has a policy to have a mandatory waiting period of a minimum of 10 days for public inspection of the proposed collective bargaining agreement. So this item will be taken up at our June 2 council meeting. Goes the same with Item L, Resolution Approving Collective Bargaining Agreement with CSEA Local 2001, our professional and technical union, as well as Item M, Resolution Approving a Collective Bargaining Agreement with CSEA Local 2001, our supervisory unit. So all three contracts will be posted on the website and available for review in the town clerk's office for a minimum of 10 days. So that completes Items for Discussion, so we move to Miscellaneous. First item under Miscellaneous is the Consent Agenda, Items A1 through A6. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda? By Councilman Mangini, seconded by Councilman Hall. Discussion? Sensing none, by a show of hands for the Consent Agenda, all those in favor? Those opposed? Consent Agenda is adopted unanimously. We move to the next item, which is Request of Transfer Funds for Public Works Buildings and Grounds, $45,000. Resolve that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made to Buildings and Grounds, Natural Gas, $45,000, from Solid Waste Disposal Services, $45,000. Certified, the funds are available, Lynn Neney, Director of Finance.
All moved.
By Councilman Mangini, seconded by Councilman Stokes. Any discussion? Any discussion? Sensing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Stokes?
Four.
Councilman Susak?
Four.
Councilman Arnoni?
Four.
Councilman Bosco?
Four.
Councilman Sikala?
Four.
Councilman Denny?
Four.
Councilman Hall?
Four.
Mayor Copan?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Lee?
Four.
Councilman Mangini?
Four.
There's ten in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Next item, Discussion, Resolution, Request for Transfer Funds for Public Works Highway Division, $55,000. Resolve that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made to Highway Overtime, $55,000, from Solid Waste Disposal Services, $55,000. Certified, the funds are available, Lynn Neney, Director of Finance.
All moved.
By Councilman Hall, seconded by Councilman Mangini. Any discussion? Sensing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Stokes?
Four.
Councilman Susak?
Four.
Councilman Arnoni?
Four.
Councilman Bosco?
Four.
Councilman Sikala?
Four.
Councilman Denny?
Four.
Councilman Hall?
Four.
Mayor Copan?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Lee?
Four.
Councilman Mangini?
Four.
There's ten in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Next item, Request for Transfer Funds for Public Works Buildings and Grounds, $56,025. Resolve that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made to Buildings and Grounds Overtime, $45,000, salaries temp seasonal, $10,285, Medicare, $600, FICA, $140,000, from custodial health medical insurance, $45,000, from Buildings and Grounds Bottled Gas, $11,025. Certified, the funds are available, Lynn Neney, Director of Finance.
All moved.
By Councilman Mangini.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Denny. Sensing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Stokes?
Four.
Councilman Susak?
Four.
Councilman Arnoni?
Four.
Councilman Bosco?
Four.
Councilman Sikala?
Four.
Councilman Denny?
Four.
Councilman Hall?
Four.
Mayor Copan?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Lee?
Four.
Councilman Mangini?
Four.
There's ten in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Next item is Discussion, Resolution, Request for Transfer Funds for Commercial Properties Rehabilitation, $18,248. Resolve that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made to Commercial Properties Rehabilitation, $18,248, from first-time home buyer, $18,248. Certified, the funds are available, Lynn Neney, Director of Finance. By Councilman Hall.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Stokes. Any discussion? Sensing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Stokes?
Four.
Councilman Susak?
Four.
Councilman Arnoni?
Four.
Councilman Bosco?
Four.
Councilman Sikala?
Four.
Councilman Denny?
Four.
Councilman Hall?
Four.
Mayor Copan?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Lee?
Four.
Councilman Mangini?
Four.
There's ten in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Next item, Discussion, Resolution, Request for Transfer Funds for Building Inspection, $12,000. Resolve that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made to 6,800 Building Inspection, salaries part-time, $5,500, overtime, $6,500, from 6,800 Building Inspection, Building and Mechanical, $12,000. Certified, the funds are available, Lynn Neney, Director of Finance. By Deputy Mayor Lee, seconded by Councilman Mangini. Discussion? Sensing none, roll call, please. Oh, sorry. Councilman Sikala.
Were these, is this after we've hired somebody in addition? Didn't we just hire an additional inspector or a part-time inspector?
Well, we had earlier in the year increased the number of full-time staff to account for, you know, the additional work. You know, since that point in time, the number of permits are coming in, the value of those permits, just looking at the revenue, we budgeted about $425 or $450, I believe. We've already exceeded $800,000 in value of permits, and so the workload is definitely a lot higher than what we anticipated earlier on. We brought the full-time, or we brought additional full-time person on really in anticipation of the high school project, and that right now is getting full swing. They're right now working to permit the first phase, as you're probably well aware, and are expecting the second phase to be coming in shortly as well. So, trying to balance the fact that, you know, we're effectively committing one full-time member of the staff just for the high school review part of the project, we still have a lot more work going on than what we anticipated earlier on.
Well, it looks like part-time is less than overtime, so maybe entertaining hiring another part-time to cut down on the overtime may make sense.
Right.
Okay. Is that something that we're looking into?
I think, you know, where we've always been short is having additional part-time individuals.
Right.
And that's something that we're constantly recruiting for to try to get more, because I think next year becomes even more of a challenge if, if we see the continued pace that we're seeing right now outside of the high school piece, you know, we're gonna have to address that.
Okay. If it's something that we're looking for, because, I mean, there's a savings, obviously, if we can get part-time over what overtime is.
Yeah. I think, yeah, it's just a matter of finding those individuals and bringing them on.
Bill, the revenue line item here, that is fees collected for those purposes? Is that?
Correct. That's the permits. Yep.
All right. And when we say part-time, is that really an employee, or is that professional purchase services?
Well, depends. You know, if we're unable to get, you know, qualified part-time, and we do have one part-time individual that works, really works part-time, like part-time of the year, who will be coming, joining us here very shortly. You know, if we can find additional part-time people to backfill that, then that's the way, the more preferred way to go. Usually is more cost-effective to have part-time individuals. If we go to a professional services kind of agreement, there's usually a lot of overhead in that that, you know, we don't really want to pay for. But again, if we get into that situation where we don't have a choice, that's what we'll have to do.
Any further discussion? Sensing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Stokes?
Four.
Councilman Susak?
Four.
Councilman Arnoni?
Four.
Councilman Bosco?
Four.
Councilman Sikala?
Four.
Councilman Denny?
Four.
Councilman Hall?
Four.
Mayor Copan?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Lee?
Four.
Councilman Mangini?
Four.
There's ten in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Next item, Discussion, Resolution, Resolution Authorizing the Town Manager to Enter Into an Agreement with Connecticut Light and Power. Resolve that the Town Manager, Matthew W. Copppler, is authorized to enter into and amend contractual instruments in the name and on behalf of the Town of Enfield with Connecticut Light and Power to participate in the Clean Energy Communities Energy Efficiency Incentive Program. By Councilman Hall, seconded by Councilman Arnoni. Discussion?
Yeah, I got something.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to highlight the Clean Energy Committee. Both Donna and I are on the committee. Their hard work with Solarize Enfield earned credits to actually get this money for us to use back into the town to actually improve some of our energy efficiency. So, I just want to thank the committee for the hard work. I mean, they really did quite a lot of work signing people up for Solarize Enfield and other projects they did to try to help have a little cleaner environment and a little better energy efficiencies in your house. So, with that being said, thank you, and thanks.
Thank you, Tom. Any further discussion? Sensing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Stokes?
Four.
Councilman Susak?
Four.
Councilman Arnoni?
Four.
Councilman Bosco?
Four.
Councilman Sikala?
Four.
Councilman Denny?
Four.
Councilman Hall?
Four.
Mayor Copan?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Lee?
Four.
Councilman Mangini?
Four.
Oh, four.
I'm sorry.
There's ten in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Good morning, Cindy.
Good morning. Yes. And our final item under Miscellaneous, Discussion, Resolution, Request for Transfer Funds for CLNP Bright Ideas Grant, $15,000. Resolve that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made to Northeast Utility Bright Ideas Grant, purchases professional and technical services, $15,000, from general government grant revenue, Northeast Utility Grant, $15,000. Certified, the funds are available, Lynn Neney, Director of Finance.
All moved.
By Councilman Mangini, seconded by Councilman Hall. Discussion? Sensing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Stokes?
Four.
Councilman Susak?
Four.
Councilman Arnoni?
Four.
Councilman Bosco?
Four.
Councilman Sikala?
Four.
Councilman Denny?
Four.
Councilman Hall?
Four.
Mayor Copan?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Lee?
Four.
With our thanks.
Councilman Mangini?
Four.
There's ten in favor, none against, no abstentions.
That completes Miscellaneous. Next item on the agenda is Public Communications. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council? Mr. Messenger? Remind folks, five-minute time limit. Please state your name and address for the record. Please refrain from the use of personalities.
Okay. Robert Messenger for King's Court. I stayed because I felt that you misunderstood me. I wasn't looking for you to bid to have this work done. I thought you might maybe hire some people and put them in the tax office, or even in a separate office in the sewer department to do this work. Create the jobs in Enfield and keep them here. That was my goal, not to bid it out to another company. The town should be able to find qualified people to do that work. They used to do that work before Scott Shanley came along. The taxes used to come from the town, not from some godforsaken business in Maine. But I guess that's something to do with the bank, and I'm not smart enough to understand. But, anyway, that was all I had to say. I thank you for your attention, and have a good evening.
You too, and thanks for being here. Anyone else? Public Communications. All right, then we go to Councilman Communications. Bill? Mr. Messenger, if you wouldn't mind holding on for one moment. Scott, through you to Matt, could you explain, because I know we've got this question from a lot of sources, what they do in Maine and what TD Bank's function is there, and how that kind of plays into the way checks might have been cleared in the past?
So, TD Bank North is the town's main financial bank, for lack of a better word, our depository. They are where we put all of our money. They do, you know, all the money that the town has runs through TD Bank. One of the functions they serve for us, and it's free, but it's free only because we have the balances that we have on a continuous basis there, but is provide a lockbox. And what a lockbox does is it takes the checks, or sometimes the cash, that is mailed either as part of the taxes, or in this case, the sewer billing. And, you know, I'm gonna try to make this simplified, because this is more for me to simplify it, not for probably you guys probably well above that. But, you know, they open it, they check it, they account it, they put it directly into our account the second that they process it. There is efficiency there, because it does, as Mr. Messenger said, you know, it does, if we were to do that ourselves, you know, we would have to hire people to manage that, you know, to open up every one of those, and then it would be an accounting process to account for, and then ultimately it would be deposited, and we would be losing a day to two days' worth of interest on the money that we put in there. You know, cash management, and a lot of people, you know, never really appreciated the art of cash management, getting it into someplace that earns interest as quickly as possible, because, you know, when, you know, in the 80s and 90s, when interest was, you know, you're getting 5% or 6% interest on money, you didn't worry about it. But when we're getting, you know, less than a percent interest on our money, you know, every day counts for us. And so, a lockbox allows us to get money put as quickly as possible into our bank account where it starts earning money for us. That's really the, everything behind what they do. Again, Mr. Messenger's right. If we didn't have that lockbox, we would have to open up every one of those envelopes here, we'd have to do the processing here, and then we'd have to then deposit it in the bank here. And I think there is a lot of efficiency in how that works, and we're not, you know, just the only municipality doing it. There are a lot of municipalities across the United States that they handle, whether it's taxes, or sewer bills, or water bills, or anything that they bill, the same way.
Thank you. For what it's worth. Thank you. All right. Councilman Communications, Councilman Hall.
Matt, just a quick item going back to the Route 5, Oliver Road intersection. I had a text from a resident stating that when they were looking at the studies for the high school, the state had four accidents in the area that they were looking at, and our local police department had a record of 60. So...
Yeah, and again, the state usually looks at a three-year window, and so that could be, again, I'm not quite sure exactly what that information was, but I know they review three years' worth of data. They don't go back, because we saw that out on Broadbrook Road at the intersection of